Oh, now you know her daughter.
Okay, we're in, uh, board members, we're in session. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 25th, 2017. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 20th, 2017, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Mr. Mahmood is absent today, so Dr. Schiff is going to call the roll.
Dana Bogashevsky. Dina Santafonte.
Here.
Brett Cooper.
Here.
Judy Haas.
Here.
Jennifer Haley.
Here.
Thomas Kinst.
Here.
Lorraine Swanson.
Here.
Jean Trahill.
Here.
Gregory Gillette.
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're going to proceed directly to the approval of minutes. We had minutes from the September 25th, 2017, meeting. Let's start with the executive session, so let's have a motion for the minutes for the September 25th executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
Uh, Mrs. Haley? Okay, so let's have a motion for the September 25th regular meeting.
So moved.
September 25th.
I'm sorry. You did it every time.
September 11th.
It's for the September 11th meeting.
September 11th.
September 11th, excuse me, thank you, Ms. Haley. September 11th.
Moved by Mr. Kinst, seconded by Mr. Santafonte.
Cooper.
Uh, any discussion?
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Cooper.
Minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Stand.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go right to, we have a big agenda today with a lot of new employees to introduce, so I'm going to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every year, we have the pleasure of welcoming our new staff members to join the Hillsborough Township Public School team. This year, we had close to 1,800 applications for close to 100 positions. Quite remarkable how many people are interested in working in the Hillsborough Township Public School system. And here tonight are many of our new staff members who will be introduced by a variety of administrators, and I believe to start us off tonight, here is Dr. Mary Ann Malady, principal of Amsterdam Elementary School. Please welcome Mary Ann to the podium.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome all new members of our Hillsborough community. You're very fortunate to work in such a wonderful environment, and we're very unfortunate to have you. When we introduce the elementary school new employees, if you could please come up and just stand by that green line, and then when it's all finished, we'll ask you to go to your seats. Thank you very much. At Amsterdam School, we have three new staff members, and this evening, we have one of them with us. So I'd like to introduce Renee Evangelista. Renee is going to join us as a special education resource teacher. So welcome, Renee. Ms. Xing cannot be here this evening, so it's my pleasure and honor to introduce the new members of the Hillsborough Elementary School team. And I don't know who you are, so if you're here this evening, come on up, and if I miss you, just raise your hand and tell me I missed you. There are nine new members, and six of them are here this evening. We have Steven Chums, the ASI teacher. Welcome, Steven. Jessica Lee, third grade teacher. Tiffany Mandl, guidance counselor. Emily Mirabella, special education teacher. And Rebecca Saz, our world language teacher. Welcome. Welcome, Rebecca. And right now, I'd like to hand the podium over to Lisa Heisel, the principal of Triangle Elementary School.
Welcome, everyone. Triangle School had three new staff members, of whom one is with us this evening, and that would be Joe Larimendi. Joe is a long-term sub in our technology department. Dr. Jenkins also could not be here this evening, so I'm going to announce the names of the Sunny Mead new staff members, none of whom I know, so if you're here, please join us. If not, we can clap for you anyway. Megan Corliss is a new third grade teacher. Welcome, Megan. Caitlin Dunn is a long-term sub as a music teacher at Sunny Mead. Lisa Brills-White is the new guidance counselor. Samana Marali is a third grade teacher. And Kim Valdez is a special ed teacher at Sunny Mead. Welcome, everyone, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kerrigan from Woodburn.
Good evening, everyone. Woodburn had six new additions to our staff, of whom one is joining us this evening. Kathleen Shelley, please come on up. Kathleen is joining our child study team as social worker. Hoping I didn't forget anyone? No? Excellent. I will now turn it over to Ms. Jody Howe, principal of Woods Road.
Thank you. Welcome. Woods Road had 13 new staff members, and we have, I believe, five here this evening. Could we have Paige Edelman come on up? She joins us as a special education teacher. Welcome, Paige. Next, we have Emma Meany. She also joins us as a special education teacher. Come on up, and welcome, Emma. Next, we have Erin O'Brien. Erin joins us as a long-term sub for grade one. Welcome, Erin. Next, we have Megan Todd. Come on up, Megan. Megan joins us in the kindergarten wing. Welcome, Megan. And last but not least, Heather Zayzula joins us on the third grade team. Welcome, Heather. Did I miss anyone from Woods Road? Nobody snuck in the door? Okay, great. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Christopher Carey, principal of Otten Road School.
I love all of you, but you're dismissed. You can leave. We'll make room for Otten Road. Thank you, thank you very much. How about the Otten Road staff? Come on up. While the Otten Road staff are making their way, we were happy to welcome 11 new staff members to Otten Road. I believe five are here this evening. Give them a second to get in place. Height order, please. No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding, no.
That's a challenge.
Okay, so when I introduce you, you can just kind of wave, make sure everybody knows who you are. First, we have Julie Batika. She's our special education teacher. Welcome, Julie. Next, we have Erica Cluff. Erica Cluff is an instructional assistant with us at Otten Road. Next, we have Frank Core, grade five literacy and social studies teacher. Carrie Nielsen, speech language specialist. And last but not least, Amy Triano, instructional assistant. There we go. Welcome. And again, welcome to everyone else. I hope the first month or so has been going well for all our new staff and new teachers. I wish you all a great year. And that's it for Otten Road, so we can go back to our seats. Next, I'll introduce the principal of Hillsborough Middle School, Dr. Joe Chabolski.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Good evening, everyone. This evening, Karen Binger, the principal of the high school, cannot be here, so I'm going to introduce both middle school and high school staff. So if the new staff members from the middle school and the high school would kindly join me up here, I'll try to do my best to... The numbers add up. So the first person, the middle school is proud to hire nine new staff members, and actually, one additional, there's a 10th one that's on tonight's agenda as an instructional aide. One was able to be here this evening, and really happy to introduce Kirsten Holt. Kirsten, if you'll step forward and wave. Kirsten's joining the middle school as a seventh grade science teacher. Then, on behalf of the high school, the high school had about 18 new staff members hired this year, and five are with us this evening, starting with Carlin Dunn, who is joining the high school as a tech ed teacher. Also in the tech ed department is Paul Goldstein. Paul?
That's good.
In the science department, as a new physics teacher, is Tessa Mazzio. Tessa? In the math department, the high school is welcoming Jason Ruddick. And finally, with us this evening, is a new high school guidance counselor, or school counselor, excuse me, is Amy Thompson. Amy Thompson, welcome, Amy. And I didn't miss anybody, did I? All right, very good. Thank you all, and, oh, one more other thing. I don't know if anyone is here from the transportation or other departments within the district. All right, well, welcome to all the new staff members that are joining those departments as well, maybe not going to be here this evening, and to all the new staff, congratulations, and have a great school year. Thank you all.
Thank you, and welcome. I'd like to invite the board to have a brief recess. We have some goodies in the honor of our new staff members, and this will give our Board of Education an opportunity to meet and greet you and welcome you on board. Congratulations.
We'll take a brief recess. We're back in session. We're going to continue, Dr. Schiff, with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my pleasure to introduce a new member that is sitting at our dais. Macy Brandiwine is our new student representative. Please join with me in welcoming her to our dais. I'm also pleased to share some wonderful news from around the district with the Board of Education and community members in the audience this evening. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School senior Erin Chang, who was recently accepted into the National Association of Music Educators 2017 All-National Honors Ensemble and Mix Choir roster. This choir, made up of students from 49 states and territories, will perform in Disney World this November under the direction of five of the most prominent conductors in the United States. Congratulations on this honor, Erin. Three students in Hillsborough have been named semifinalists in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to Hillsborough High School seniors Iris Liu, Catherine Nayan, and Diana Veronin on achieving this prestigious honor. To be named a National Merit semifinalist, students must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, submit a written essay, and earn SAT scores that confirm their earlier performance on the PSATs. About 1.6 million juniors in more than 22,000 high schools entered the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program by taking the 2016 PSATs. All semifinalists are eligible to receive 7,500 National Merit Scholarships worth close to $33 million. The nationwide pool of semifinalists represents less than 1% of high school seniors. From approximately 16 semifinalists, 15,000 are expected to be named as finalists. Three types of scholarship awards will be given this spring, including National Merit, corporate-sponsored, and college-sponsored scholarships. Congratulations, well done, to Iris, Catherine, and Diana. We are very proud of you. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. We're going to, we, committees met this month, so we're going to shift over to committee reports, and I'm going to start with, I think, Mr. Kinst, you're going to do the operations committee?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Operations committee met on September 13th. Items that we discussed were getting an update on the buildings and grounds, facilities, including replacement of the Hillsborough High School track, paving plan, preparation for heating season. In the discussion, we had a review of what the Aramark Facilities Condition Assessment Report is going to have, and we requested an estimate from Aramark to include the hardscape, so we can include the parking lots and other impervious landscape that we can include in the long-term facilities plan. We got an update on the non-public transportation. As we had voted on and acted on earlier, we are supplying busing service to non-public students through two buses that the district had leased, so a combination of the increase in student, increase in reimbursement from the state, which occurred just over the summer, is very, actually, very little notice for us, but we were able to do that and provide that valuable service. We had a discussion on donations for a new scoreboard with input from administration and from the athletic director and the Hills High School principal. We had a discussion on caution sharing measures with the township, specifically about township police and overtime, and then also maintenance of the central office, which shares space with the municipal, in the municipal building. We had discussion on updated demographic study, and this will be to run, given the additional developments that are in place with COA, it's important to make sure that we are able to incorporate those changes, and any changes in increase in enrollment, and particularly, it's important as we continue our work on the strategic plan. We had a discussion on the air conditioning. We looked at a couple bids. They came in expensive, and as we had discussed earlier, we had looked at bidding out ARES only, HMS only, and then both schools, and we're going to direct our architects to complete an alternate bid for HMS and ARES to have the completion date in August, so over the summer. One of the issues in the costs was essentially to have it done by March would require essentially overtime, they'd be working off hours, which increases the labor costs. We had an update on the pipe and sewage issues at the high school. There was a very quick action from Mr. Cantiro, facilities director, to make sure that there were no issues on opening day. So they described what happened and how they addressed and resolved the issue, and the facilities director will create a preventative maintenance process that includes all the pipes. So we have blueprints for where the pipes are, so they'll do preventative maintenance and make sure that all the pipes are cleared out to minimize any risk for sewage backups. We had an update on the mold and letter, and lead water reports, and it was essentially a follow-up from the presentation that we had here at the board meeting two weeks ago. And then we had a review of the preliminary audit results. There were no findings on the audit, and we are going to request that the auditor comes into the next operations committee meeting to report the audit in full. And lastly, we had just an update on what the referendum dates and deadlines are, so if we have to go out to referendum, essentially, for those dates, you have to have all the paperwork in six months ahead of time. So when you look at the stagger, and it's about every two months, all the paperwork needs to be in about six months ahead of time. And then lastly, Ryan Ellis presented a grant opportunity for Sustainable Jersey for professional development, and that is on the action committee, when we approve to move it to the, to the action committee. That's it for operations.
Thank you, Mr. Kinst. Questions? Jean?
Can I ask a question, Tom? On the Sustainable Jersey grant, I noticed it said $2,000.
Yep.
Can it be more generic, in case there's other schools who would like to apply?
This one, this one was a specific grant opportunity for professional development, so it is...
Was it the energy version, because there's another one for schools?
I don't know specifically. I think it's, I think it's for any purpose, just Sustainable Jersey in general, and it's to help provide professional development. We've got the green teams that are formed, so it's to help provide professional development for those members, and it also allows us to earn points for the different qualifications, whether it's bronze, silver, or gold.
Okay. All right, thanks.
For each member trained, we're allowed to get points, so that grant will help us pay for their training, which could be online or in person, and then those points will go towards the next level.
Oh, yeah, I understand. It's just that there's, there's other opportunities from Sustainable Jersey that are energy, and then I believe there's a small schools grants, that's, the clothes cycle is October 31st. I thought that's what it was? So it's $2,000 and $10,000, there's two different grants?
Yeah, this one was specifically, that's my line.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Tom for operations? All right, so let's move over to Mrs. Haas for education.
Okay, the education committee met on September 12th, and we had our usual wonderful meeting, and I'd just like to thank my colleagues, Lorraine and Jean, because we always get a lot of value out of our meetings, because everybody's prepared and everybody really is into all of this. Anyway, we started out approving a social studies US History I honors curriculum revision. This was just a state standards for language arts, language tweak, nothing important there. We also reviewed two new course proposals, and these courses are electives for seniors at the high school who may want to take math in their fourth year but don't necessarily want to take an AP class. So the proposal that was brought to us was discrete math and statistics CP, and we think that there will be a demand for that. The curriculum writing for these courses will be funded in the 2018-19 budget, and we'll take a look at whether or not other math classes decline because of the availability of these classes, but again, it's an elective, it's an option. It'll compete probably with other subjects, you know, other areas like English or social studies, electives, and not necessarily math. So we're very happy about that. We had a discussion with our supervisor of nursing, Lorraine Borick, about Narcan policy. That was a very interesting discussion, and basically, there were a couple of key points that were raised in relation to whether or not this has been a problem in our schools, and would our resources be better spent educating students and families? We're going to continue our discussion, and one of, one of the issues, as it always has to be, is the fact that anytime you take on a new responsibility, you have to have the resources with which to perform that responsibility. However, (cough) excuse me, in this particular case, the law about administering this drug gives districts a choice between doing it only during the school day, or during the school day, and at all after-school activities, and trips, and all the other things, which have been problematical in the nursing area. So the committee decided to take a look at what the resource commitment would be if the policy was adopted for school hours only versus school plus. So we'll get back on that. We have a new curriculum that we're hoping everybody will support on tonight's agenda for an elementary counseling program relating to sexual assault prevention. And this is a program that is a NIH-endorsed program, and we're recommending this so that we could get this done very quickly, and hopefully, if it's approved tonight, for payment by surplus funds, we can start implementing after training goes on in October, and then implement by November. And it works out really well that this was the year that we added three counselors to assure that every elementary school has a counselor, and the counselors will be able to go into the classrooms and deliver this program, so there'll be fidelity and accuracy, and it will be well done. It's a very flexible program, and it provides newsletters for parents, among other support. And I, I and the committee unanimously recommended to the, to the full board to proceed with this curriculum. We also reviewed policies and information regarding professional boundaries. We had some input from Phil Nacastro from Strauss Esme, who reviewed the materials that we found in relation to what other places are doing on professional boundaries. And we had Jessica Smedley with us, who shared that it's equally important to minimize risks to student and staff. And there are circumstances where counselors, nursing staff, and other staff are alone with students to protect the privacy of the student. So we looked at what was provided. We talked about it at length. We're on our way. Since the meeting, we received a draft from the policy committee, the policy company, and we sent it back for some reworking, because there were some parts that remained problematical. And hopefully, we can have a special meeting of the education committee at some point so that we could expedite the materials after they're reworked, and we could move forward as quickly as possible. After we go through the policy and committee process, we will share the new policy with our teachers and administration, and get their input and comments and suggestions, and after that, we'll put it on the agenda for first reading and notify the public that it's on. And that way, members of the public can weigh in, and hopefully, we'll get a document that's something that everybody can be happy with. We finally ended up with a discussion on achievement gaps. The news is good. I mean, the park results, the achievement gaps, we looked at, but the news about park and our standardized testing data is overall good, and we had improvements in both language arts and mathematics between 2015 and 2017. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Any discussion, questions for, about education?
On the, on the park results, I think typically, you present, so planning to do that. Excellent, thank you.
Sorry, I should have mentioned that. That was a commitment.
Greg, I have a question. Sorry.
Jen?
Excuse me, I'm losing my voice. On the Narcan, is there any way it's coming? I know that at least through the police departments...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You know, I'm sorry. I was, too good of a time on vacation.
Okay.
Narcan. I know that at least through the county, there was some programs that were available in different areas. Is that something that we could take advantage of, or no?
Yeah, many, many of our staff, especially our nursing staff, has taken advantage of the training. The training is free for the public, and I think you get a kit when you, you know, when you complete that class successfully. And the other thing that I failed to mention before is that police carry Narcan. And, you know, obviously, emergency service and, you know, so there are a lot of outside people that could cover for us. So it was really, really a discussion about whether or not it was our role to do that. And there was a variety of opinion.
I'm sure.
So we'll, we'll get there.
Thank you.
Anything else for education? All right, so we, Mrs. Bogashevsky was a late absence, or whatever you call it, tonight, who is going to give that for HR committee. Since she's not here, I'd ask anyone else to do it. I don't know if Dr. Schiff, if you have the minutes, if you'd like to update us on HR committee. I know it's not regular order, but...
Not a problem. I'd be more than happy to do so. The, the HR committee met on September 11th, and we discussed a variety of issues. One which kept the balance of our time was process and questions regarding the approval and the warning of clubs. We currently have clubs that are within the collective bargaining agreement, we have clubs that are outside of collective bargaining agreement, we have clubs that are fully funded, some are partially funded, and some are not funded at all. So there was a discussion about trying to pull it together to make sure that there's predictability in terms of compensation, and how, what, and when certain costs would be passed along to parents as well. So at this point, Mr. Volpe is gathering up a variety of information from, from our club advisors, and we'll continue that discussion at our next HR committee meeting. Mr. Volpe also updated the committee on our opening day staffing. We do have a few late resignations that came in that were holding those staff members to their 60-day notice, but all certificated staff positions have been, have been filled, and we're still interviewing for a few of those other positions that are going to be vacated within approximately 60 days from the start of the school year. There was also a conversation as a follow-up to prior discussions about background criminal history check and, and checking across state lines.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. Any questions on the HR committee report? Okay, seeing none, we go to, okay, comments from the public. There'll be a couple of times tonight when public may comment... There'll be a couple of times tonight when public may comment at our meeting. This, this time will be for items on the action agenda or new business. Public for items on the action agenda or new business. Board will comment on the action agenda as we normally do as we go through it unless, um, okay. Okay, I thought, I thought I saw someone standing there, I tried to stretch it out.
My goodness. Kitty Ward, Secretary of HEA and Sunny Mead, teacher at Sunny Mead. I had a question about the, I'm sorry, I don't have the number, the non, it was one of the new resolutions, it's, it's technology for non-public schools. I just, I had never heard of that, just curious what that was about.
Sure, Dr. Antunes.
There are certain, certain non-technology textbooks and nursing that we are flow-through for, for non-public schools within our area, within our sending area. It's an annual thing that we have to do every year and the ESC actually manages that for the district, not just for our district, for other districts. So, that's just an annual mandate that we have to make sure that we comply with.
So, we give them money or it's required or you?
It's required.
It's slated for them or slated?
It's slated for them.
And I saw security, like something about it.
Yep, that one's new last year, security is new last year, so that's right. It's textbooks, nursing, technology and security.
Interesting, okay. All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
These are federal grants that we administer and distribute.
And it's finite also, it's a finite amount of money.
Yes.
Schools have to make sure it works.
Okay, so, before we go to the, I'm going to do this right now, before we go to action agenda, Dr. Schiff, I, we're going to be beginning the negotiations with the Hillsborough Principals and Supervisors Association. I never publicly named who's going to be on the negotiations committee. I said I would do that, I didn't do it at reorg meeting, I said I would do it as we got close to negotiation, so I'm going to do it tonight. I'm glad I held off because we have a little, a few changes or one change on it since the last time we, several members spoke. So, I'm going to, I'll be on the committee, I'm going to chair the negotiations committee. We'll also have, Ms. Trujillo is going to be on the committee, Mrs. Centafonte and Mrs. Bogeshevsky. So, that'll be the four of us on the negotiations committee. All right, I just want to get that out of the way because I forgot to do it last time at the end of the meeting, I wanted to do it early now. Dr. Schiff, I'll hand it over to you for the action agenda.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education to approve travel and related expenses, overnight field trips, revised U.S. History I Honors Curriculum, new course proposals, both as reported out of committee, approve the counseling program as well, approve the LEAP program, approve substitution of play unified grant and approve the resolution for non-public expenditures, also approve the sustainable jersey grant, and that's all.
Okay, Joy, here a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
I need to separate out nine point, um, eight, nine point eight.
Nine point eight, Judy, okay. Any other discussion?
I do.
Yes.
Just real quick on the languages extended exploration program. Has it starting in October? Has it always started that early? Okay.
October through March.
Okay, I remember, I remember like January through, and, and again, just, you know, every year we ask just, how's it going? Is it well attended? Do we have minimum requirements?
Yes, yes, yes. Actually, the first year it did start later and then after that, then we started, started it sooner. And without our World Languages Supervisor here yet, the teachers have been wonderful in feeding me information like, oh, this is when we need to do this, which has been really, really great. So, that's been.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so, we'll, we'll, we'll vote on nine point one through nine point nine, but excluding nine point eight. So, everything except nine point eight. Okay, I'm going to send it up, send it over to Dr. Schiff for a roll call.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes. Okay, resolution passes. I mean, the, the agenda passes. So, let's go to, let's, we need another motion for nine point eight.
Second.
Okay.
Moved by Mrs. Swanson, second by Mr. Kinst.
Okay, any discussion on nine point eight? Okay, we'll go right for a roll call then.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Epstein.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Human Resources.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following recommendations that I'm making under the area of human resources to approve retirements and resignations. I'd also like to recognize Helena Yanush, who has been a custodian at Wood Fern since September 1st, 1999, and has been with the district and will be retiring on December 1st. We thank her for her service to our school district and Wood Fern School in particular. To approve revised appointments is listed, affirm the appointments of a teacher and approve the appointments of a teacher, instructional assistant, coach, co-curricular intermural advisors, substitutes as listed, and approve mentors and buddies as attached, approve student teachers and pre-approved extra-period coverage, approve extra-period coverage, approve six-period coverage and approve extra-science lab coverage for this year, approve the group, and approve the group changes.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, discussion for the HR. Yes, Mrs. Haas.
On the co-curricular and intermural advisors list, I noticed there was only one for robotics. What is our?
You're still looking for a second person.
Okay, but in other cases, there was like a position and it was marked vacant. So, just so that we can have an idea.
I'll give you an update once, once we get, hopefully, we'll be able to, to fill both of those positions.
Okay, it's our annual thing, every year, we're scurrying for somebody for that team.
And lots of interest in that.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Anything else? All right, roll call.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. And go to operations.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to approve monthly bills lists, line item transfers, financials, transportation contracts and policies for first reading as listed and accept the donations first from the Cummings family for a new Strobel full-size violin and used William and Lewis and Son Dokla made in Germany for the Eris Orchestra Program, as well as the HEA's donation of 100 reusable water bottles.
Motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second. Can we?
Discussion.
Can we separate 11.6?
11.6, divide this into parts A and B, let's mark them A and B, do you want to?
Okay, then B.
Okay. Thought that's where you're going. I wanted to make sure, so 11.6, B, if you will. Okay? Any other discussion, questions? Okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll have a roll call on everything from 11.1 to 11.6 excluding the very last donation listed. Okay? Sounds good? All right, Dr. Schiff.
Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion's pass.
All right, can we have a motion on the reusable water bottle donation?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Mr. Cooper? So, let's go discuss it. I just want to bring up the fact that it is a nice donation, it is somewhat needed, although we want to make it clear that there are water bottles in all the rooms, most of the kids bring their own water bottles anyway, so it's not an issue that our kids are starving for thirst. The issue I have with this donation is the fact that it does have what could be considered advertising on it. Yes, I'm prideful of the school everywhere, too, but it does have the logo for the union on there. I think this opens the door, the Pandora's Box that, you know, McDonald's then wants to send in water bottles and we say no because it's marketing, you know, we've already set precedent here if we allow this in. You know, I understand it's the union, you know, and it's not anything against the union and, sorry for you back there, but, but I think it sets a bad precedent for anyone because it then opens the floodgates and then it opens, you know, we're trying to build a new playground. Well, okay, let's go get out some marketing, let's sell signage. I mean, it just, baby steps leads to big steps. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper and Mr. Kinst.
Just for clarification, when, when you make reference to, to the union, it has a logo of the NJEA, which is prominent on the, on the, on the logo there for those board members and members of the public, for that clarification. I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the current situation at Sunny Mead? How are the students being? How are they receiving their water? How are they doing? And what's, what's the true need for the water bottles?
We, we're currently putting a case in each of the classrooms, there are four classrooms that have the faucet and the bubblers turned off in those rooms and we'll replace those, those water bottles. Those are not reusable, those are disposable water bottles. The, and I've reported this out, I think at the last meeting, that we're in the process now of receiving information from the manufacturers of certain filter makers to determine what filters would actually remediate it. It's important to note that the board did remediate all of them. We put in new faucets, we put in new bubblers and we put in filters in, in all of those areas. We're still seeing elevated levels, so they have not been turned on since and this is why we're doing it. We did receive a report just yesterday of a recommended filter. However, that filter is too large at this point to fit underneath, so we're looking now at another manufacturer to give us some input and hopefully, find us a filter that's small enough so we don't need to keep them off. The reason I'm sharing this with, with the board and the public is that it may take a little bit longer than what we first anticipated in order to remediate that. I was there on Tuesday of last week, I saw maybe half a dozen reusable water bottles that the kids brought in, in each of the classrooms over there. So, there, there's clearly some of the students have brought in reusable water bottles. One of the concerns that had been expressed at the last meeting is, is not to have to use and throw away the plastic water bottles to be able to use reusable water bottles may make it easier. We do have potable water outside of those classrooms, either in the hallway, at the bubblers, the water fountains there, or in neighboring classrooms that the kids can use as well as the bathrooms.
And also, I just want to state that when the donation was offered graciously last week, it was not clear that it was a branded water bottle. So, I was under the impression that it may have had a logo, but it didn't have a logo of an organization. So, I, I share also concern that this is in conflict with two, two board policies. One is 7230, gifts, grants and donations, and also 9700, which is special interest groups. And while the HEA is an affiliate of the NJEA, the NJEA is a special interest group. And I, and I share the concern about if we open the door to this group or this organization that we would then be obligated to observe or to accept donations from any party because otherwise, we'd be charged with discrimination. Have we received a, a legal opinion on this?
We, we did literally about an hour ago, so it just, it just came in.
And, and what was that? Because it's important for the board member to understand what.
Yeah, absolutely. The board may accept it, however, the concerns that you raised and that Brett raised are what our attorney would consider legitimate concerns that would require policymaking or other type of things in order to rectify, so we don't have an issue of we say yes to one and we say no to the next, that would, we could be exposed to a lawsuit.
So, that's basically a legal opinion that discouraged acceptance of it?
That's how I would characterize it, discouraged.
Yeah, so let me just clarify that, Dr. Schiff sent me, forwarded an email to me about 7:00 PM, I think, this evening that he received, just received from our attorney within, I guess, within the, the hour before that or less.
Yep.
And I immediately forwarded that to all the board members, but I know you were already en route and may, might not have read it. But it, it is as, the opinion is as Dr. Schiff stated and, and Mr. Kinst clarified that, the opinion of the attorney advises against accepting the donation, although we are permitted to do so. Just for your, what's worth. Dr. Swanson?
I appreciate the comments that have been made, I don't know. I appreciate the comments that have been made, however, I would say precedent has always been set. There is plenty of times where groups, special, special interest groups, BACs and STEPs that, that juvenile, you know, diabetes foundation, are not only giving those products, but requesting people to give money to those groups through our stimulus and materials that have been sent home. The NJEA, while I would prefer a water bottle that doesn't say anything on it, to avoid these sorts of situations, they are a part of our school, it has a good message about being proud about the schools. I don't think we could say that precedent hasn't been set and I think that almost negates all of the comments that have been made. So, I, you know, while I respect everybody's opinions, I have my own opinions, I, you know, I do see, I do think this was a very nice generous donation made by groups in our community with no messaging besides who they are and I think everybody's aware of them, so.
And historically, also, we have actually dissuaded local community members. I know, I recall an instance where there was a dental health professional local who provided volunteer service of, of, of health education, dental health education and part of what, what she did was to provide materials, toothbrushes, toothpaste from her office, which happened to have her name on there, and we've had people in the community complain because it had the appearance that we were endorsing this particular health professional, which wasn't the case, but that was the perception. So, again, there's, there's, there's a difference also in terms of while we say in our, in both procedures that we do not endorse any product or donation that, that the board chooses to accept, there is an appearance of an endorsement.
Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Trujillo is next, I think. Okay, Mrs. Haas.
Okay, first of all, I'm happy and I appreciate that this was put on our agenda and I think it's important that we express our opinions on this. Many years ago, and I don't know if it still exists, there was a pride program that was sponsored by the NJEA and it was all about pride in our schools and back in the day, they provided a lot of objects. Is that correct?
Yes.
For, oh, good, okay. And the whole purpose was proud of our schools. And quite honestly, if something says NJEA and also says proud of our schools, I'll look at the second message and frankly, I have no problem with the first message because honestly, our teachers are branded NJEA and we have no problem with them being in our classrooms and.
Well, I disagree with that. They are the Hillsborough Education Association and we're bought and we do, and we do our businesses with them. We have no legal affiliation with the.
I don't consider them an outside special interest group. I think they are, as advertised, the heart of our district.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that the HEA is a special interest group.
Can I finish my comments?
Yes.
Okay. Anyway, this was offered from the podium, it was a solution. It was a solution to the problem of water bottles creating excessive waste. You know, we had on our agenda today a sustainability grant, and at the same time, we're rejecting an opportunity to act in a sustainable manner. And I really, you know, right now, we have no problem with water bottles that say Nestle or Poland Spring. So that's a direct advertisement of a company, and nobody says anything about that when they're in the classroom. So my point is, the offer was made, I think we really should pick our battles, and this just simply, to me, is not one of them.
You're deferring again? No, it has to be you now. Sorry.
So I have to say, at the last meeting, when the offer was made, I actually did make a comment that I was concerned about that it would be a business. That was my concern. But in looking at the logo, I have no problem with it. And also, the way the policy, where it says donors are encouraged to counsel with the superintendent prior to making donations, and the board will respect the intent of the donor, I think the intent is very generous, and we should, I guess, honor our teachers by accepting it in the gracious manner in which it was donated.
Anyone else?
Well, the only question I really had was, I remember the last time we had the presentation from the dentist at the podium. And I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, I know that dentists can no longer bring their branded items in, but have we stopped every organization in town from bringing anything into our schools?
No.
Nope.
I can't, I don't know.
So that's my concern is, I don't, if we're going to tell one, no, that's, or everyone, no. If we want to look at our policy and make sure it's, you know, two weeks may not make a big difference in terms of whether we accept the donation tonight or another night. If we want to look at the policy and say, across the board, we're going to make sure that we don't bring anything in, to be consistent, that may help some of the board members here. I don't know, but if it's not consistent, if we don't, if we're not guaranteed that other organizations aren't bringing anything in with a logo, I think it's hard then to turn this away.
I just want to make one comment about the dentist. The comment from the floor, because I was on the board and I was here that night, was that there are other dentists in town who would like the opportunity to advertise in the schools. We don't have that issue here. We only have one union. And so, and it's not even as, as was pointed out, Hillsborough Education Association is a part of that brander union. I don't even know that a lot of the students will be taking these homes, or whether the parents will even know what the NJEA is. So, you know, but that aside, I think that there are plenty of products that we allow in our schools that are branded by companies and other organizations. And again, like I said, we allow them to fundraise in our schools, so I, you know, I think this is a very nice gesture, and I'm willing to accept it and run it through our schools.
I think fundraising for breast cancer is totally different than...
It's a fundraiser for everything under the sun.
I'm just saying.
But that's not a donation to the board, which is what these policies entail. It's a solicitation for, it's not covered by these policies. Solicitations for donations for other causes is not part of these, is not part of these policies.
Mr. Cooper.
Can I bring up one point?
Sure.
This plastic water bottle's reusable. It's the same, made of the same plastic that their water bottles are. To say that I have to throw away a water bottle after it's used and not refill it is nonsense. It's the same plastic. You could reuse this just as easy as you could reuse their bottle. So this is not disposable, and that's as disposable as this is. So that's...
I think when we purchase through Sedexa, we don't have a choice to get generic labels. We have no choice to get generic labels when we purchase through Sedexa. I mean, I apologize, I have the Snapple cans here, I was thirsty, but that's what's offered to our schools.
Anyone else?
And again, and again, they, Snapple or Sedexa or whatever, they pay to be in our schools. They pay to sell their products. We're giving them, the NJEA, advertising for free. Now, if they want to pay and make a donation, or pay and be in our schools like all these other companies do, like you make a point of all these things, they pay to be here. This is, you know, Snapple or whatever is through Sedexa or whatever, and Sedexa gives us money to be here, so they can choose who they're selling to us. And the other thing is, we're not against the donation. If they want to donate a hundred bucks and go, or go to the dollar store and buy a hundred generic water bottles, we'll take them. It's not the donation itself, it's not where it's coming from. It has advertising on it. I could go to the Y and get a hundred water bottles. Would that be okay if I brought, if the Y gave us a hundred water bottles to donate to Sunnymead?
Yes, I'd take it.
And we accept it.
And we accepted it.
And so why is that any different?
So why is that any different?
I never accepted it. I don't believe in all these fundraising. Have they donated stuff and we accepted it?
The Y has donated things to the elementary schools, to all my kids during elementary schools. I wasn't on the board then, so I don't know if it was a donation that was done through the board, but yes, things come through all of the time.
All right, let me...
But that's not always go through the board. Like, the raising for all these, all these groups, a lot of times it's through the HEA or through a teacher or something, it doesn't come through the board, and we can't, we can't stop it if we don't know about it.
I think I'm going to bring this back around to close up. I think everybody is, asked good questions, I think it was a good discussion. We had a very generous offer made at the previous board meeting. We had Dr. Schiff consulted with Mr. Goodhue from the HEA about the offer as is provided for in our donation policy. I appreciate that. We had an opinion from our attorney who advises against accepting donation. That's, okay, we don't have to listen to our attorney. Our attorney will defend us no matter what decision we make, believe me. But it's important to know that he advises against us.
But said that we may do it.
Mm-hmm, excuse me?
But said that we may do it.
Yes, it's not prohibited, advises against us, but he'll defend us if we, no matter what happens, if we do it, if we don't do it, that's what the attorney does. He's going, yeah, right, that's right, getting paid to. So with that, I think we'll go for a roll call. Dr. Schiff.
Thank you. Mrs. Centafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kinst?
No.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mrs. Trujillo?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Okay, motion passes.
Motion passes.
What was your vote, right? What was your vote?
The chair doesn't need to vote. Passes four to three. Let's go to, wait, let's go to comments from the public on old business.
Hello, my name is Christine McAvoy. I am a mother of a sixth grader here at Aris, and I'm here tonight to talk about Google Classroom. I was very proud of Hillsborough when, years ago, you became one of the first districts to be one-to-one with the devices. And I work in a different district, and I used to say all the time, I can't believe they have all of this in Hillsborough, and we're still lagging behind. But I have to say, in the last couple of years, everyone has seemed to march way past Hillsborough, in my opinion, in using the one-to-one devices, particularly Google Classroom. My son does not have any Google Classrooms being used this year at Aris from any of his teachers, nor did he have any last year, except for his computer teacher. So that is basically, his entire time at Aris will have no Google Classrooms being used with this device. And I'm wondering if maybe that was, that's a lack of training, maybe teachers aren't fully aware of the wonderful things that happen with Google Classroom. And basically, they are still using websites, which is from the 1990s, and now you have to go on six or seven different websites every night to find out the homework, to keep up to date with the documents that they're posting, et cetera, where Google Classroom is an app on their phones, on parents' phones. Teachers can easily push out information, announcements to parents, and everyone always says they want more parental involvement, and we, in the district that I work in, have seen tremendous gains in our parent engagement since we have fully gone Google Classroom without it being an option only if teachers want to. There's nothing in our contracts that say we have to grade papers or not grade papers, but every teacher grades papers. So the feedback I got back when I asked about this as a fifth-grade parent was, well, it's not in their contract that they have to do it, but everybody grades papers and that's not in their contract either. So I just think that you have a lot of in-service days in your district. You certainly get a lot more in Hillsborough for teachers than I get in my district where I teach, and we found a way to get fully trained in Google Classroom. We have people that come from other schools into our school a lot to see what we do with Google Classroom. Feel free to come on down to Edison. We'd be happy to have you, to show you how to use Google Classroom effectively, but I think the teachers would be very pleased with it also. The amount of communication that can happen within Google Classroom is so much more collaborative than you get in just using Docs separately or any of the other Google features. And also, the big push now is for differentiated learning, and that allows a teacher to push out assignments for different groups within the classroom for differentiated learning and provides immediate feedback. And not only that, but a teacher can automatically see that five kids didn't turn in their assignment, as opposed to making it take two or three days to find out a kid didn't turn in an assignment. So I just wanted to let the board know that I don't think it's being used fully, and I've heard it from other parents at sporting events that have older kids, they don't use it either. So I think it's something to look at from what happened in the past. And as a proud NJEA member myself, and also a taxpayer of Hillsborough, I want to say congratulations for those of you who just voted yes. I think it was the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Sonier, and I teach first grade at Sunnymead. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for voting yes for the water bottles. That's why I came tonight. My classroom is one of the affected classrooms that has no sink or water fountain, and although it was mentioned that, yes, we do have a case of water available to the students, which I appreciate, I wanted to share some data with you, because I feel like the district likes data. So from today, I had 20 students present. The number of students, thank you, the number of students without water bottles coming in on their own was five. The number of students who needed a water bottle ended up being eight because they went through the water. The number of times I had to stop to help open one of these water bottles was six. I had to close seven of them. There were four spills. In my classroom, I also have a nut allergy, so we have to wash our hands before and after lunch. Sending 21 six-year-olds to the bathroom and trusting that they're washing their hands with soap and coming back is a little bit crazy. We're getting there, but it's the beginning of the school year. And the number of complaints from my students who did not have their own water bottle, and they don't understand why, was four today. Sunnymead School has the highest population of students in the district who are on free or reduced lunch. I have students in my classroom who are getting breakfast served to them because they cannot afford to have it at home. I'm fortunate enough that as a child, I did not have to live like this. Drinking water should not be a concern in 2017 in this district. So although I understand your point that having the HEA logo on the water bottles may cause a concern, my kids can't read that yet, so that's just starting. We're going to get there, but they can't read that yet, they don't understand, and all that matters is that we are best meeting the needs of all of our children. Being hot, sticky, thirsty, and spreading allergens around is not helping them. So thank you very much for thinking about it from a teacher perspective, for how we can best meet the needs of all of our students, not just the privileged ones. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Henry Goodhue, Laurel Drive, Hillsborough Education Association. I would like to thank all the board members for sharing their opinions tonight on the donation. It was enlightening. And I would like to especially thank those who voted yes. As a point of clarification, the water bottles were never intended for all students. They were intended for those students that Ms. Sonier just spoke to, those who come from households where they may not have one, and who have to walk past their peers to go get a tepid water bottle because we don't have climate control within those classrooms. And then, students whose dexterity doesn't allow them to open that water bottle yet. And yes, they have the NJA pride logo on them that predominantly says, "Proud of our great public schools," which, as Mr. Gillette shared with me via email this morning, is a sentiment that we all share or should. And as a point, just a historical point for you, that logo has existed for 25 years. That logo has been present in our schools for 25 years. You're debating something that is already here. Every pride project we have ever done, every project we ever do comes from this through a company where that is there. Now, things that haven't been here for 25 years, possibly rock star. I find it ironic that we're having an argument about a water bottle that demonstrates our pride in public schooling next to two coolers selling energy drinks, which, I'm sure we can all agree, research has proven one are addictive and two are dangerous to young children, yet we have them in a fifth and sixth grade school. Caffeine, taurine, all the other things listed on there, those are detrimental to the health of a developing child, yet those are there marketed because a company paid a fee to the district to put them here. Not only that, there is Snapple, Otis Spunkmeyer, Hot Pretzels, and everything else right here marketing sugary drinks and things that are not nutritionally balanced to our children, yet we have no problem with that because they paid. So next time something like this comes up, do we need to pay? Does there need to be a dollar attached to a donation? We had absolutely no intent in this beyond serving the needs of our children. Had the district reacted before us, we wouldn't have even come to the podium. So I just want to be very clear about that, and I had zero intent of speaking tonight, and we had zero intent of making anything beyond this. In fact, my words were, "I simply want to drop off an unmarked box, put it in a closet, and give it to those students who need it." That's it. If two of the hundred got used, that would have been perfectly fine with me. But the fact is, is that in a district where we train kids to use a certain device and a certain piece of technology and a certain program, we are creating consumers devoted to that product, and we have hesitation about water bottles. We use free apps in here because they're free that are riddled with pop-up ads. And at no point have I ever heard a board member express consternation about the fact that there were multiple classrooms throughout this district of children sitting on tablets with pop-up ads coming up. That is marketing at its finest. They are getting saturated with marketing. You need to consider how you approach these things from this point forward. We are not looking to be a special interest group. We are not looking to market ourselves. There is no ploy on this one. We are seeking to serve the students that are in our classroom because they deserve that. There is not one child who should come to this school, or any school, and worry about having clean, cool drinking water, or feel like they need to be ostracized because of it. And certainly, that argument carries absolutely no weight when we're having it in front of these coolers right here. Thank you.
Can I say something?
No, I like to do this.
Because, no, I'm not going to sit here and be...
Okay, Ms. Haley, Ms. Haley.
I'm not going to sit here and be accused of not caring about all of the children in the district, the underprivileged, the overprivileged, however you put it before, because I care about every single student here. Second of all, when I ran for the board, this is up my second term now, one of the first things I tried to do, Henry, was to get rid of all of these things, and it never happened. It's like a lot of other issues that we debate, I can't do anything about it. Okay? And just so everybody remembers, my mom's also a union member. She has been teaching for 40 years, so, I'm not anti-union, but don't accuse me or anybody else that voted no of not caring about every student, period. Sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Please.
Good evening. Joanne Barrett, Gemini Drive, Hillsborough. And I come here today, I came here today, tonight, to speak about the water bottle issue, but since the vote was in the affirmative, thank you for that. I am not only a resident of the community, but I'm also an NJEA member. I'm here tonight with my Pride in Public Education shirt on. And so, what I wanted to say tonight, part of what I wanted to say, the lady in blue had already said, that the Pride in Public Education logo is part of a committee that every local has. My local has one. My local has one, every local in NJEI has one, and the role of that committee is to talk about the great things that take place in New Jersey's public schools, and one of the ways that we do that is through giving out items. And it's not for marketing purposes, it's to say, "We're here. We care about our community." In my district, we gave out the same water bottles. In my district, we gave a Pride in Public Education knapsack to every graduating senior this year. It's not a marketing ploy, it's just to let you know we're thinking of you and to let you know that we're interested in the most important members of our community, and those are our children. And even if it wasn't, and even if it was a marketing ploy, which I don't believe it to be, why would the Hillsborough Board of Education not want to market the very people they vetted and hired to work for them? So, once again, thank you for your yes vote. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Bob Fenster, Hillsborough High School Social Studies teacher for the last 25 years. Quick comment about the water, and then I want to move on to something else. I just, I don't think what Henry was saying was an attack as necessarily people being anti-student or any, or...
Let's have her come in and speak for us.
Okay. Regardless, the, there is, there's something comical here when we are actually arguing that little children are going to be marketed to with an acronym that they don't know what it is, and after they drink that bottle, it goes in the recycling hopefully and doesn't even leave the building. And again, so since it, I appreciate that you tried to get rid of the Rockstar drinks, maybe the board can take that up again. It's insidious, the amount of marketing that is going on in our public schools to our children through, again, as Henry Vera eloquently pointed out, with regard to stuff that is actually quite bad for them. In addition, and we can debate the merits of pro or con regarding this issue, how about the United States military recruiting in our commons in the high school, having push-up contests and handing out swag to students? Are they paying to be there, or are they another interest group that is deciding, basically trying, taking advantage of an open invitation to them? Now, more importantly, in terms of something that is affecting me as a teacher, on the first day of in-service at the beginning of the year, after spending the entire month of August working on my lesson plans and my website, updating it, trying to get information out to students and parents, in the last half hour of the in-service, we received an email from the principal of the high school passing along a new policy about second chance education and no zeros and very little explanation of how that would be applied. The email basically said, "Speak to your supervisor if you have any questions." Now, this is after we've prepared all of these materials. The second chance education thing, while well-intentioned, basically says if a student fails anything, that the teacher needs to meet with the student and arrange an alternative path towards mastery. So, every single assignment that a student would fail, the teacher is then going to have to find time to create alternative assignments for them to do or alternative ways for them to demonstrate mastery. And grades basically apparently are, from my understanding of the short entry, those failed grades are replaced by new grades as they come in. How this is supposed to affect common assessments and the data that we're being asked to put together to demonstrate how much students are learning or how students are performing, none of this has been discussed at any level outside of committees, as I understand it. It hasn't been discussed at any length with the staff, and the timing of that is hugely problematic. After we've created policies for our classroom, literally, it was, I was in my department meeting with 15, 20 minutes left with, where we were already assigned to do something else, we were unable to even talk about it in our department meeting, to absorb, not everyone had even seen the email. So, I would ask that the board flesh out this policy, give staff an opportunity to comment on it, not just the single committee that was working on it, and basically give us an opportunity to implement it rather than throw this at us. We're talking this week, I teach two, actually, I teach, right now, I teach three different preps. I'm in a PLC that does not, I'm no longer in the PLC for three of my classes that I'm teaching, so I have to contact people by email, what are we going to do about the common assessment tomorrow? What if students fail it? What are we going to do? We have no idea. We don't know how to proceed. Do we, do we basically tell the kids, "Well, if you fail, you can just take the exact same multiple choice test again," which has no pedagogical value whatsoever? No, instead, I suppose we're supposed to individually meet with these students. When are we doing this? When are we getting time to write, to create new assignments to assess the same material that we've already established, that in some cases we worked on in our PLCs or we worked on in our spare time? So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Sure, we can talk about it. Can you just tell the board what he's talking about?
Sure, yes. We have a grading task force, and it's, and I'm going to turn over some of where the details to Dr. Antunes, who can...
We don't need all the details.
Well, just enough so that you can get an overview of the concerns. The concerns about communication and making sure that people are well aware of any change, it is insufficient to have it through an email during the first week of school, clearly. However, there are some very important things that we need to talk about as a district in terms of giving every child every opportunity to be successful. As I shared with the entire staff during my opening remarks, our performance is extraordinary in many ways, but we do have achievement gaps, and we do have disproportionality. We see that in gender, we see that in race and ethnicity, we see that for kids who are on free and reduced lunch as well. And we need to explore mechanisms in order to give every child the best opportunity to move forward, including ensuring that every child has a pathway or at least an opportunity to take some of the most rigorous courses that we offer in each grade level. We have work to do in that area, frankly. And with that, I want to turn over to Dr. Antunes, and she could share a little bit about the process that's going on.
The grading task force has been in place for approximately three years and is made up of staff members from every content area and every school and administrators. However, this is not really new. There are teachers throughout the district who have been implementing these things for years, working with their department supervisors in doing so. Has every person been doing it? No. Has it been mandated previously? No. Absolutely not. However, this is not new to our district at all. In fact, we had a grading symposium over the summer where 100 teachers were, came. It was totally voluntary. They were paid to attend, and they attend, and they had more information provided to them. So, building consensus is absolutely taking place. However, as Dr. Schiff said, this is not anything that's looking to give teachers more work, and if you speak with your supervisors, they will help you navigate these adjustments. They are well aware of all of these, have been talking about it, not only in grading task force, but anybody who's taken U ME and the PLC over the last six years has been aware of these things. The research is out there. I am not going to get into a back and forth with you, Mr. Fenster, so you don't even have to go up to, we can talk about it separately, you can ask questions, and you can absolutely reach out to Dr. Sini, who will speak with you about it.
If you want to have, if you all want to have one follow-up, I'll...
Yeah. The fact that 100 teachers got training this summer, and I was a participant in U ME and the PLC, I'm aware of the trends in education. Some of them I agree with and some of them I don't, but the idea of rolling it out on the first day of in-service is ludicrous. And the idea that, I mean, basically, you know, the members of the committee were largely handpicked, people who supported the policies, the direction that the administration wanted to go. Many of them were. I wasn't asked to be on the committee. I would have volunteered to be on the committee. Now, bottom line is, there needs to be, there should, there are, I agree with Dr. Schiff with what you said, absolutely, the goals that the district has are noble, but when you're talking about the practices, the radical changes that are taking place, and in some cases in classes where, I mean, theoretically, a student who has no business being in an AP class, for example, who manages to get into the class, and there are definitely people slipping through the cracks who get in there, could just retake and retake and retake to achieve mastery, and there would be, or another example would be the no zeros policy. How do you, what happens when a student doesn't do any work? I've heard this for years, well, you should, you know, you should meet with the student, find out what's wrong. I've done that perhaps in various situations, and for whatever reason, the student's not doing it. There's a million little, there's a million examples you could come up with. I'm not looking to, I, I, I'll do the policies, I'll fulfill the policies that are given to me from the Board of Education and from my supervisor, but I'd like to base, I'd like to not have them thrust upon me, I'd like to have more input than I do, but I don't want them thrust upon me without that input. The vast majority of the teachers in my department did not agree with the no graded homework policy, but ultimately, we were told, "This is the policy, you're going to have to accept it." So, we're doing that. There's also a million workarounds for every one of these, for every one of these issues, and ultimately, my concern is that although I want every child to succeed, the actual results of the grades that they're getting are hyperinflated by rubrics that we are implementing, the retakes, the everything. I wonder if at some point colleges will catch on that every student at Hillsborough High School ends up getting an A and achieving mastery. There are problems with this approach. We're trying to, you know, there are certain students that this is tremendously beneficial for, and there are others who it's problematic for, and I think that we're rushing headlong into something when it's issued on the first day of in-service at the beginning of the school year. That's a huge mistake, given no warning to the staff.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your concerns. They've been noted, especially as to communication, which Dr. Schiff has acknowledged. Please.
Elena Misari, Hillsborough High School, Hillsborough Education Association, second vice president and pride chair. Thank you very much for the accepting of the donation of the water bottles. There's been a lot of talk about Pride, which is a program that I am the chair of for our local, and I would just like to invite you all to partner with us on the many events that we do this year. We would love to see your participation because I think we all know we're all proud of our public schools. And please stop by the homecoming game, we'll have a table there with our rally towel, which is Raider Pride. It also has our logo on there, but the kids love it and it's a real crowd pleaser. So, look forward to seeing you there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? All right, board members?
Totally unrelated.
Okay.
For those who have children in the high school, it was nice to get the communication about everyone taking PSATs this year. I think the kids are excited, especially the young ones who would normally not be ready to take them, but they're excited to be part of that, the upperclassman group and be considered to take the chance to take the test and practice and do better. So, the feedback I've gotten is positive, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Didn't previously all have the chance to take it?
They do, but not all at the same time. So, this year, ninth, 10th, and 11th are all going to, everyone's going to take the test, where usually it's whatever grade you're ready, where your math and your math placement puts you. So, some kids will start in 10th grade taking it, some 11th grade, so it depends where you are. So, this year, every kid gets a chance to take it at ninth, 10th, and 11th and up, which is, if nothing else, a good practice for them to get used to a test during the school day.
Anyone else?
Huh?
Ms. Trigill?
Shall we talk about the calendar?
Yeah, you can talk about that if you want to, yeah.
So, I just had a request on our October meeting. We have two, I guess, wait, today's September 25th, so the next meeting is October 9th, and then the next meeting in October is October 23rd, which is the opening day of the school board's conference. So, I wanted to see if there was a possibility of moving our board meeting to October 30th so that those who are attending can attend both events.
So, we talked about this briefly in operations committee with Dr. Schiff. Dr. Schiff, I think you'll also be attending. You would miss our, you would miss our board meeting also, but I don't remember you advising strongly to change the meeting. I think you didn't really offer much of an opinion either way. I don't know if you've changed your mind now or give some other guidance?
Well, I would just suggest that if we have two board members plus the superintendent, that's not going to be in attendance, that if we're available, if we have availability to meet on the 30th, then I would recommend we at least explore that as an option. My response to you was really that we have Dr. Antunes that could fill in for me, and we could have the, we could have the meeting.
With some notice, you can fill in with some notice, Dr. Antunes. So, this is not, is this something that, I usually would ask Mr. Mahmood this question, but he's not here. Is this something that we could vote, we can have a motion and vote on immediately? Usually, we wait to put something on the agenda, but I don't think our own business regarding our own meetings has to be, wait for another meeting to vote on.
No, no, we can have a member move in a second to change that meeting date. We have eight members here tonight.
What's the rule of the board or the discussion? I mean, I'm open to it, you know, I'm...
Are there any things that need to be, because of the cadence traditionally, and when we set the calendar, it's the second and fourth Mondays, is there anything that for normal operating business, moving it to the fifth, moving from the fourth to fifth, either paying bills or any other, any other operational things where you need an actual action by the board in order to execute?
Well, from my experience, as far as approving the bills list, and again, there's that, the problem usually comes when we have our second meeting too early in the month before the bills are ready. Too late in the month is never a problem from that perspective.
We also, correct, and our November meeting is scheduled for the 13th, which would work.
So, we wouldn't maintain two weeks in that aspect.
We wouldn't have back-to-back board meetings.
I don't want to, yeah, so anyone else have any thoughts of it? I'm open to it if you want, if someone wants to make a motion, it's okay. I appreciate that two board members are going to the convention, whatever we call it now, and Dr. Schiff also. And I, no, when we set the calendar, we look at the, we, you know, we can look at that date, but the actual, the official opening of the New Jersey School Boards Association Convention is Tuesday morning. That's like the official opening, but they actually open on Monday. They have classes on Monday also, right?
So, actually, the official opening is October 23rd. They, the commissioner allowed the conference to be extended to four days, so it actually, there will be activities on Monday.
Yeah, right, right, but I know they, when we, when we reviewed the agenda of the, of the convention with Dr. Schiff last week, we saw that, oh, the opening was Tuesday morning, but yes, indeed, they do have classes and activities on Monday, so I appreciate that. So, does someone want to make a motion that we can whip around and...
So moved.
Tom?
Moved by Mr. Kinst, seconded by Mrs. Haley.
All right, do we, want to do a roll call to change the meeting? I think maybe we should.
Yes. Mrs. Santafonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst?
Yes.
Dr. Swanson?
Yes.
Ms. Trigill?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I have one other thing, look, I wanted to...
Given the timing and the spirit, should we come in costume?
Yeah, that's right, we come in costume. I wanted to say one thing addressed to the public, and this is just coming to me now, but the board operates as a body, and after we take a vote where we're split, I really don't appreciate having board members singled out or half the board singled out or praising the board members that voted yes or castigating board members that voted no on any issue. We operate as a board. You get to see it because it's public, okay? But the decision we make, we make together as a board. Okay, you get to see the sausage made, I understand, but, you know, you don't want to point out those nasty parts of the sausage or the bad parts you don't like. If you enjoyed the sausage, if it was good, you got what you wanted, I think that was kind of wrong. That's all I wanted to say. Now, we're going to go to executive session. We have two items on executive session. We're going to return from executive session with no action. We won't do anything. So, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that the public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Tenth of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are the HPSA negotiations and the superintendent's contract. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're going to executive session. We will just come out into the hallway probably to adjourn, we probably won't even come back in here.
Nice to meet you.